Okay, we'll go ahead and come out of recess and continue on with the agenda that we approved. At this time, we'd like to ask who that Garland should do finance report for at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have just got a few items to throw in on this evening. I'll bring you to our financial highlights package. Our ending cash in the general fund checking account at the end of July was four million twenty-seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars. We're down just a little bit from this time last year, but it's not, it's, it's, it's not as bad as it appears. When you flip the page, you're going to see one. If I flip over to page... Excuse me, twisted me. Page four, or actually page... Yeah, page four. Our tax collections for the month of July on the surface look really bad in comparison to this time last year. Five hundred eighty-six thousand thirty-seven dollars in real taxes, current year twenty-three thousand in prior years versus one million two eighty-three basically this time last year. But Alcoa paid their taxes early last year, okay, which was around seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So our variance, our difference is the fact that they were trying to get sold and they were trying to get everything paid. Because typically, Alcoa would pay around September or October. So if you flip back over to the first page, the fact that we're still at four million twenty-seven thousand dollars is good news.
Can you say that?
Yeah, that we haven't collected there. And I was really excited that we could bounce back into the four million dollar range so quickly. Because we pulled the cash balance down quite a bit at the end of June paying all the year-end bills. So the fact that we have not collected, Alcoa, we're still well over four million dollars in the bank, is good news. That we've got that reserve, you know, that's holding us, dropping us up and keeping us until we get those bigger tax payments in.
Babe, you know, all that, all that, since it's sold, do they come under different tax burden than the annuals?
I'm thinking that Irma could tell us for sure, and I'm thinking that they're going to trade in like Alcoa. So we're hoping that when we get through the revow, that we're hopefully going to see some bump because, bump up because of the fact that it sold at a pretty nice amount of money. And that they, because they're not like a public utility, we use assessed value. That's, that's what Irma has told me, and I have to excuse my forever, very good voice this day.
Well, it should be higher because they spend these dollars.
Exactly, and they've done a lot of infrastructure improvements and whatnot, so I'm hoping to give a nice bump.
What about the Tennessee Valley, whatever that land?
Tennessee Valley Trust.
North Tennessee Land Trust.
Did they all those, did they not go to back there to the Brookfield or Main Clean or what?
If they have some of their land, sort of property, that they're allowing the North Tennessee Land Trust to maintain their easements on. Everything is still in place. There's, there's nothing changed as far as what property that they have that is still in.
But we need to talk about that.
On, on the pieces of the property, and I can't remember the exact name, but it's not the whole tract.
Right.
It's just specific areas where they have these specific conservation easements. It is removed from the tax base. It's removed from the tax base until that property, until they find a buyer for that property, which is hopefully going to be in the private sector and not too much force, and then it will draw back into the tax base. But that, that is the intent of the Tennessee Land Trust, is to find a property buyer who is willing to maintain those conservation easements. But it would, it would come out from underneath the ability to not be taxed, because it would never not be an own property at all.
Sorry, babe.
So that's fine, because that was a really good question at that moment, too. If you want to flip back to page four again, you know, as I said, our real taxes were five hundred eighty-six, which compared to this time last year, if you factor out Alcoa, we had collected five thirty-two, and two years ago, four eighty-one. So we're constantly, you know, building as far as what our collections are, at least for that first month, which is a good thing. Because that helps us recover from the end of the prior year. Because the end of the year, we're just kind of stuck on there when it comes to revenues and expenditures. So, so I'm really pleased with that. And then in conjunction with that, just as an FYI, the foreclosures are moving forward. Our tax collector spent some time in Cherokee County the other day to work through title searches and whatnot so that she could feel like she was in a good place to do that work. And so they're working diligently on that as well. It will take time for that revenue to generate, but, you know, as we saw at the end of June, when those letters went out, we began to get some collections on those old taxes. So, so that's a good process for a tax, you know, the taxpayers should kind of pay time. Just skipping over to page six, our revenues for the month of July were about 1.389 million dollars. And our expenditures were five hundred and three, so we've got a surplus for July of eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. That, those numbers may change just a tad as I go through the audit, but I'm trying to make my, make my adjustments as I've been able to gather my data. We had, the reason we had no expenditures this July and last July, because we had 162,000 in expenditures, is we were, we had to make around between 50 and 55,000 dollars because those final payments on the transfer facility, which we're waiting on that money to come back in. And then we had several of those daycare payments that just passed through. We have to pay it, and then we get the money back. So we're chasing dollars that just purely pass through, but we had to spend them out before we could get it back. And then, of course, our revenues were down, but they were down eighty-six hundred dollars. But if you factor in that we lost Alcoa, or not lost Alcoa, we're waiting on Alcoa, or whatever they call it, Brookfield, we're still tracking, you know, pretty nicely as far as revenues and collections are concerned. Page seven is our sales tax, and we dropped just a tad from the July page. We got 129.3 in July, it dropped to 128 and some change for this month. So, but we're still tracking ahead where we were this time last year. So that's, you know, another good indicator that things have recovered a little bit, continue to recover somewhat in our global economy. Any questions on this report? The second report I've got is off of our new computer system. And nobody knew, except for the ones that were in the administrative office this morning, how happy I was when I went into my system and I generated this report in one minute.
Oh, wow.
Where it would have taken me pretty much all day, put a lot of work last week. All right, you have my page there, because I've got plenty of other big projects I get to do now. And I might have a little more time for them. These are just your, each, and you'll notice that you've got each individual department, and then it also breaks down each program in your health department, so you can look at it. And just to give you kind of a words I view, your first column's going to be your yearly budget. Your current expenditure will be your monthly expenditures, or as we go through the year, it'll be year-to-date. Well, it also has your year-to-date expenditures. Your encumbrance is where the departments have requested a PO. They've not paid the bill yet, but that goes ahead and comes off the budget. And that's where we always wear that nebulous, so is what's hanging out there? We don't know what we've got? We kind of know, but we don't know. And I will say, all of the departments have just jumped right in and are doing their purchase orders and calling ahead. And so I think the departments have, at first, we were all just having a little willys about it, because we were a little worried about how was all going to work, but I think everybody's kind of beginning to like it a little bit. And then your last column is your remaining, what's remaining in the budget. And you'll always, if you look at the top, it says ideal remaining percent is ninety-two percent. And some of your departments, most of your departments are well within that, or a little, you know, if it's like ninety-seven percent, that means they've not spent up to their budgeted amount for the month. Some of them are over, though, that don't panic at this point. Because some of our programs and some of our departments have to make big upfront expenditures July one for maintenance contracts and different items like that. So that pushes their budget kind of out of the way. Now, if it stays out of the way, then we get worried, you know, after a couple of months, if it's still looking like it's way out, then Mr. Paywell and I will be having meetings at that point. But this, this is probably, to me, the best tool that we often have right here. And it can be pulled at any moment, at any time. And of course, as soon as we get the payroll on board, if we'll be going live on payroll January one, then no department manager will have to ever wait on Michelle or me to get payroll posted or any item like that. So as we get the bills in each, you know, each week, we're posting those things in and getting them ready to pay as they come in so that each department can track their progress and know where they are. And I think Ms. Culver back there, she was kind of liking it today, because she could pull any reports she needed. And she was really getting excited there, she wasn't going to have to wait on Michelle to get her over.
And just a question, how far, how far can you go about this kind of breaking down under each department?
I can go down to every line. Every line. I didn't know if you wanted a forty-five page report today, but I'm heading for it.
If God knows where it stands, we're going to have another page.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's one area, too, that when they come back in December to train for payroll, then they're going to be training all of us on budget track and how this system is going to allow us to come in and make our projections. And each, each department manager will have what they need at their fingertips to do their budgeting.
Can you generate historical?
Yes.
What was the name of the machine?
This is Smart Fusion.
What?
Smart Fusion, or CSI, but they take it as Smart Fusion all the time. But, you know, it's been, Michelle and I have a kind of a learning curve, and we've had a few days where we've kind of pulled our hair a little bit, but overall, it's gone very, very smoothly. I could not have asked for a better transition.
So it is user-friendly?
Oh, yeah.
And you didn't say if it was important that I access it?
You sure can, in fact, I've talked to Taylor about it, and all we've got to do is from your phone, install like a GoToMyPC or, you know, one of those things, and then you can log, set you up with your login. And he's working on it, and he's set you up on your login, and then you can log in at any time, day or night. It's always available to go in and do what you need to do, and look at what you need to do. So I'm really pleased with that investment. Couple other items is, I know in the workshop Chuck came down and mentioned, I'm sure you know the problem we have in the jail with the fingerprint machine. I'll just, I'll just wait for the board's direction there. As he, I'm sure he mentioned, purchase machine is seventeen thousand seven eighty-seven. And I think if we just fix what we've got, we're looking at about eight nine hundred sixty-four dollars.
With no warranty?
With no warranty.
And then is that, we were told that it's mandated? We have to say that we have this type of system, and there's one vendor?
That's what he, he spent the most part of Thursday, trying to find us another vendor. And it's one of those, we're all going to have sitter areas. Because that was what I, when he wrote it to me, I was like, surely there are no other companies, you know? Go find me two more folks. And then he came back and he said, there are no other companies that we can draw on, so.
So what do we do from the finance side? Like, I hate to put it back in the core, but.
Well, it's obviously not budgeted, and we didn't have any room in our contingency, so it's going to have to come out of reserves, unbalanced. The good news is, we have made our twenty-eight percent of the state, but I want to come back to that.
It's not considered, no grants or anything available for this type of purchase, not considered part of the course.
Well, you know, that's what I wonder, if there's any kind of law enforcement grants out there. You know, I know the, the, everyone used to, I think that's what they got, B-R-Y-N-E, used to get some Department of Justice money for specific equipment. So I'm going to have to lean on our player, maybe to try to get some grant money.
You know, you don't want to go and have a debt, a debt where you can finance.
Maybe a quest arms or not?
No, go ahead.
Well, I mean, and that's one thing that we may need to look at, is if it's something that, I don't know how old the machine we have is, and if it's something that's going to be on the part of a copier that is going to wear out and you're going to have to replace every five years, then we may want to look at something like that where you lease it, but then you're paying interest and.
Well, that's the old, run the black stuff on it, put it on the guard a little bit.
Is there a digitized?
Is there a trading?
The new system now will run those fingerprints against all of it through the FBI database. So if anything comes up in the nation, with that, with that individual, they'll, they'll know it immediately. They'll know who they have, and they have a record, things like that.
Babe, have you got a copy of the releases and discoveries?
Well, I know there's one large one. I don't have a copy of all of them, but.
That's not integrated, is it?
No.
And we don't use that device?
Well, that, yeah, if you can get it in a way collective, if we, you know, someone can collect it.
It's pending.
What were you saying?
This is out on Snowbird?
That was Snowbird.
That was Snowbird. It was in a PUV, they have in this quality to the PUV.
Through audit?
Through audit, with a little help. But if the property is in contract to be sold, the new property owner will have thirty days to notify if they want to stay in the PUV. If they do want to stay in the PUV, the logging that was resuming, was going on, will have to go back and start all over for him to stay in it, or her, whoever the new owner is. The current owners have began the process and pulled the logging out. So that's why a discovery was made on the PUV. Because if you, it's har, it's ready for harvest, and it was being harvested, and for some reason, they had put it up to be sold, and, and they say it's in the contract, so.
Ever get into the issue of transferable?
If it's transferable, there's thirty days to transfer. The, the new ownership can transfer, but the law will have to resume then.
Another thing, too, and I'm worried, is out, maybe this is a jail budget. You know that there was legislation passed, Mrs. Grant, what kind of savings would we realize for that legislation that we passed?
To the inmate cost of that?
Yeah. Well, if you look at the way the legislation is written, and that's all the governors have to be signed, is that counties would pay no more than seventy percent of the remittance rate for two times the Medicaid rate, whichever is. If you, if you look at Medicaid rate, it's typically about twenty-five percent of what a rack rate would be in a hospital is what they get reimbursed. So we've been paying the rack rate. So it's somewhat reasonable to expect that if, at minimum, even if the lease is two times the Medicaid rate, we'd be paying about half of what we were.
I'm looking at like if we did a seventy percent, we'd save about seventy thousand dollars in the medical. So we're looking at about twenty-one thousand.
The savings get paid from that.
I see where I'm going.
Yeah.
Is it a problem?
If they sign it, I mean, I'll go so far, but this time last year, we had already had one helicopter ride and a couple of really big bills. And we're having a huge amount in inmate costs that's being sent out of county. Chuck brought me a bill from Clay County.
Eleven thousand two hundred.
Eleven thousand dollars for July. So that's gone up, but the medical's gone down somewhat. You know, we're like, like I said, we didn't have, we don't have a fifteen thousand dollar helicopter bill over our heads right now.
I thought we were going to do this one.
We do, we have them in Swain and in Clay County. He just had so many inmates that went through the system in July, that he had to house a bunch in both places. I haven't got the Swain County bill yet.
What is the quality center? I don't know what completion date is on it.
So, I mean, there's the potential that we, you know, we budgeted pretty high for medical, that we'll have that excess.
Again, it's one of those loud, you really don't know what it's going to be. So how many, how many have you got? I don't want to be sorry.
One more for track is pretty much one helicopter.
We need to speak this closely.
Why? Why do we have to close?
When we, when we're going to close, about personally.
Personally, okay.
Sorry, please.
All right, we have to, well, we have to come up with something, I mean, it's mandated. We've got to come up with eighteen thousand dollars to wear. All right, we'll try to find the grant.
We just start looking everywhere.
You know, but then we have to go into reserves to the tune of eighteen thousand dollars.
In the short run, if these other things don't generate.
I don't think we have time to wait till they generate.
No, we're going to have to do something quick and just, and just pray that the money generates into that release of, at least the.
That log is.
Yeah, or that we have savings through the medical, because it's been down now for what, a week?
We probably need to go ahead and order.
Plus, you know, that machine does generate a little bit of revenue, because when people go for their concealed permits and so forth, I don't know if Chuck mentioned that.
And offering?
Yeah, it's not much. But I also mentioned to Chuck that, you know, he might want to check, you know, in our surrounding counties to see what they're charging for, because if they're not charging, then we need to increase our fees.
Swain County charged nothing, and Clay County charged ten.
Okay, so there it goes back.
Not like, but, as we're taking in five dollars each hour. I like where we go in and get one order because it depicts.
We'll have to.
And then hopefully some of this other stuff.
You know, you've always instructed us on doing the worst-case scenario. Well, that's something to be an action on this part of completion. I don't know, the first board does it, but we have to.
That's an no-no.
Okay, all right, thank you, baby.
One other short item is, we've talked several times about having off-site backup, especially with our finance office. And I looked into that scenario with the company that actually, we use for the software, and we can get a off-site backup for nine hundred seventy-five dollars a year. That, they basically keep us a hundred and eighty days of history at all times. They back up every midnight. We can go with what they call one-site access, it's got five thousand dollars here, whereas if we had a catastrophe, they would keep us up in one. But they recommend a more, that one with the, it's nine hundred seventy-five dollars a year. I think it's with us saving the money, we will be saving from not using ADP or the bank for itself. So I would recommend that we shift to that now that we're server-based and everybody's using it in the county. Michelle and I will back up our computers on our little, you know, junk drive, hard drive, but this is bigger than us being able to back it up locally, and it's not as safe to keep it locally. And when it's up on a cloud, that way we know it's, it's there. So I recommend using the savings on the ADP that we're giving to pay for.
When will we start doing the payment?
June, January. That's all I've got?
So we need to, what's it, nine?
Nine seventy-five. And I may need to shift out a little early, because my son's, his birthday is at Christ tonight, and I've got to pick him up.
I don't think there's anything else on this. Thank you, baby, very much. Okay, this time, we'll go ahead and continue. We have a report coming from Claudia Gibson, and I believe our translator is going to share that.
As many of you know, Claudia Gibson was appointed to the Golden Lake as a board member of the Golden Lake organization. She went down a couple weeks ago to her first board meeting. It was a very positive experience. She came back and decided, we are exploring any and all opportunities that we can to access some of the funds of the Golden Lake organization. A lot of folks are aware in the new budget that the back-of-senior payments were quoted as a general fund through the budget. But the Golden Lake organization still has a tremendous amount of money that they're going to be able to operate from. We are looking into any and all avenues to access as much of this money as we can, bringing it into County. We have gotten some very positive venture projects that we're wanting to be trying to meet together, partners, to get him out here to have some further discussions. Nothing really concrete yet, nothing solidly. I want to definitely report at this time, but we, we are more excited about the potential and opportunity that we have here. And there will definitely be more information coming.
Glad she's on there.
My friend, I hope you're still my friend, Babe Dodson, if you love what I can deserve. I'm sorry for the delay.
That's okay, I understand.
But sometimes, sometimes you have to wiggle around.
TV, TV clips and other unmarked vehicles around town.
That's right. I appreciate your patience.
No problem. Thanks for allowing me to come and speak to you today. Want to give you a quick update on where we are on recycling. Today, we're over forty tons or eighty thousand pounds that we've actually shipped down to Asheville. And we've run into one problem, it's really a good problem to have. We're finding that people want to recycle, but none of the days that we have set up for recycling.
And not one of the days.
Yeah, well, I, well, I know, and several people have commented on this. And so what's happening are people are leaving stuff at the dumpsters. I have volunteered to drive by once, once a day, usually at a twenty-eight location, and try to put it into the dumpster. One of the problems the sanitation folks have is that they could do it in the mornings, except that usually the people that are leaving stuff aren't really always sure of what they should be recycling. So you end up with a lot of mixed trash in with the recycling. And so what's happening now, sanitation departments basically from all of. And so what's happening now, sanitation department's basically thrown all of it into its work all through. So what we're gonna recommend, uh, what the, the board is, uh, advisory board has decided to recommend is that we change the hours that our guys are working. And right now it's, uh, Friday through Sunday, seven to seven, and change it to eight, either seven to one or eight to two, Monday through Saturday. What that means, if the hours would stay the same, no additional cost to the county, it's just gonna spread out the hours over the week so that we have more coverage. And, uh, one of the big advantages of doing that, in addition to, uh, keeping the sites cleaner in general, is that it should improve our recycling volume, I'm guessing, to work in twenty to thirty percent, uh, simply because right now all that stuff that's being said on the, on the side of the, in front of the way. So that's the recommendation we'd like to make, and hopefully that'll be in action items that we can get started right away. I know everybody, uh, on the sanitation department's ready to go with it, but just need to get approval from you folks if it would make sense. The only other thing is, uh, we talked once before about getting furniture and mattresses, uh, allow that to be dumped at the transfer station and the toss. It turns out there's no real revenue stream from that stuff now, so it would make sense to, to do that. It's probably costing us money in fact, because we usually have, have a special script to go out there and get that kind of stuff and bring it back. I found a piano out next to the, to the dumpster about, this was about a month and a half ago. So it's not, it's not small stuff that people leave, and it, it requires extra work to get that stuff back to the transfer station. So with your approval, it'd be great to be able to allow our citizens to go ahead and dump for free at the transfer station, household items only. We're not talking about demolition waste or anything else, just faulty furniture for the most part.
Right. And, uh, and Dave, I've seen this book, but that is one of our action items for tonight.
Okay.
And, uh, and being on this board, it's, uh, it's, it's really working out well, I, I think, and, uh, you, you're very businesslike in conducting that, and, uh, I wish your, Colber and I both are on there, and of course with our manager, Andy's there with Kenny. Uh, but it really is taking off. And one of the things too, we're talking about is that they're walking, they're walking the stuff to get up more in a load, uh, you know, so they're.
Yeah, that was one thing, yeah, you're right. One of the things we figured out was, and I didn't really think about this when we were coming up with the plan, how fluffy this stuff is. Because I mean, you're talking about plastic bottles that have a lot of air in them, aluminum that has a lot of air in them, and so there's not a lot of weight to it, even though there's a lot of volume to it. And so what Donnie came up with, which I think is a great idea, was to dump it on the floor and run over it with the heavy equipment.
Right.
And flatten it out, and it turned out that we were able to get up to, uh, almost ten to eleven tons of load now versus four tons of load.
Yeah.
Which should cut our, our fuel costs to and from Asheville from once every two weeks to maybe once, once a month.
Okay. All right. Well, again, Dave, I really appreciate your effort.
No problem.
Thank you. This time I recognize one, either Colber, approval of local coordination.
Thank you. Getting in on page nine, we'll see a brief overview of, uh.
Could you turn about page nine? There's page nine.
On your, on your plan, local coordination.
Thank you very much. I know you want to.
Page nine just gives you a, a brief overview of, at the bottom of the page, Grand County Services, what we do. Page twenty-five, and that's the only thing that you need to approve is Grand County's part of this. When you get to page twenty-five, if you're looking at, uh, these are our operating strategies. The bottom one, construction storage facility for parts of the vehicle, parts and supplies. We met and worked on this two or three times, and, uh, March was the last time we met and I had to build the vehicle next to March. So that strategy's already completed, just like a couple of years ago, facility and that part's completed. Sometimes it works with strategy and these fellows that you set in place. We've already built the storage building, so, but you can approve the plan for Grand County only. Southwest Commission approved it as a regional plan for all of the counties in Virginia. And our commissioners have to prove that our counties individually.
Why is the push on the regionalization, has that moved now a little bit about the matter of trying to consolidate?
It's got a little bit quiet, but I think it's gonna come back there through the conference and while we're going on.
Okay. Because that's a big concern.
It's a huge concern, and I believe it will happen. Each, each, uh, report we fill out, we have to, uh, answer a number of obstacles, seeing if you can sector for thirty minutes, a lot of information goes in there, which counties we coordinate with providing services, and that would be like, uh, I picked up somebody from Swain County on the way, or they picked somebody up for me. And I always answer, yes, that we coordinate, but we are so off the beaten path of these other counties and they'll use the same routes. It's really gonna be hard if we do that originalize, and they are really pushing.
We, we have a different view, but we need to know stuff, how we. I say he got a really good feel for that today, don't you think?
I think so. And, uh, okay. Maybe we can have a conversation out there, it's not public, and that there, there's gonna be some opportunity to get our voice out there a little bit more than we have before causes some events, so with that. So you're asking for approval of those things that are stated on page twenty-five in Grand County only?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Clark, will you go ahead and act on this?
Please.
All right, I have a motion, let me go ahead and have this.
So.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion or comment? All approved? All in genetics. Thank you very much. Anything else?
We will. We have an open house on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, it met with your calendar, but did not, uh, get conflicted with the director in the state, Teresa Hartz. We are now looking at between the fifteenth and sixteenth of September. They've not got back to me, and if they do, I'll let Kim know, she'll ask you guys to check if you're scheduled. We're gonna be having senior center and transit open house at the same time I bid since January. That's a truth, I, I cannot get a date set.
Now, what was that, six, fifteen, sixteen?
Roughly in that area, second, third week, then we'll be looking at those, and I send them the fifteenth and sixteenth, I try to call Kim, she'll know if I'm right with the bag.
I've been looking at the seventeenth and eighteenth. Sorry, seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty-fourth. Seventeenth and eighteenth.
Kim?
Yes, sir.
I'll give you that one.
I don't have plenty of them, but I mean, I could.
No, I'll give you a lot on everybody.
Ryan, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We, we appreciate you so much, Ryan. All right, this time we're moving right along, so we have a few public comments. Anybody?
Yeah, I've got one running in the paper.
Would you like to have time to speak, sir?
Me?
Yes, sir.
Well.
Go right ahead.
I'm not mad.
No, it's fine, just go ahead.
We're fine.
Okay, go ahead, the microphone there, please, we're fine. Thank you.
What's your name?
And, welcome. If you can speak into the microphone, they'll tell us.
I mean, that right, where I asked for. Somebody to sign, fix this road on, probably can't even go. Just got hold by that deep lane of the, the wide, you could, you can just barely get through it without reaching.
Okay, and where, where is that at?
My house at, at Trampi.
Oh, you, you're talking about on the campus? Right there at the school?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So they have worked on it today? All right, it is, it is an issue. Is that, that's not state maintain? Ah, okay, I hear it. Okay. All right, then, we, we hear that. All right.
It's down.
Well, there, she says that they started working on it today? So they, they started working on it today, is correct? So maybe we can done.
Well, no, one thing I asked them on about a year ago, I asked them on stakeholder, she said that, uh, we flagged our dentists, but they faced it your own way. I tried to get them all taped and, and put over the guardrail.
Uh-huh.
And then put them thing on the post, it happened a lot better than that.
Okay, where is that at?
Stakeholder, one down here, and three on, Buffalo and Robespierre and, and Mr. Branch a little bit. I think about, so we can have, we can do good with it on the post.
Oh, okay.
Stop round.
Right, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I see, we're talking.
And, and I think that's one of the maintenance issues right there that we might want to put on our, our list to have it up. Well, that's good that you mentioned that. Okay, fire your thing, yes, sir.
I think that's, so.
All right.
So that's, you want stakeholder, one, this, or Mr. Branch Road, and really open up over there.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Brad, I appreciate it. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Dave.
We're talking hard to see him.
Yes.
Do you have something, Ben?
I just want to know, uh, back in, back the house.
Okay, what is the status of that? We, we are waiting to get my word from the grant administrator, Tom Stillwell. Okay. I remember we were here the last time, and Jones Stillwell was here?
Yeah.
And, uh, they're still evaluating those. There hasn't been a decision made yet?
We haven't received grant money yet, that was the USDA.
Right.
Application that she sent in, so we have not received the notice that we've even got the fund yet.
We're waiting for the results on the USDA, the grant, the people that are gonna be paying for it.
Yeah.
We're waiting to hear if there's an award to that. But we, we're sure aware that until they had application with Stillwell. So, so that's where it is.
Gonna get the money.
Yeah, whether we're gonna get the money or not, so we're waiting to hear if that's going to happen. Um, I'll tell you what, probably you should have heard Paula County Office, did you have a talk with her about that? And Kim, Kim can help you with that call as things go along, or leave her a contact number, uh, where we can let her know.
You call her, yes.
Yeah.
And the one that's been there now was done a year ago, so.
Yeah.
And that has nothing to do with the money that we're trying for now.
We just had, we just have closed out the other one, and we're waiting to see if they're gonna refund it, or we can get some more. Okay?
Yeah, I think they might make some more, they just could find out, so.
Well, as soon as, as soon as they make a decision, we will know it, and, uh, we'll contact you one way or the other.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your patience for waiting so long, appreciate it. Any other public comment? Okay, this time we recognize, um, the discoveries and releases I have. How do we, how do we, that's, Ms. Clark, I need some counsel on this, there are.
You're approving, um, the PUVs that was taken out by our tax assessor. Now whether, whether that goes through, that's pending a sale, and whether the new owners want to stay in.
Oh, that's what, oh, okay.
But you still have to approve her taking them out.
Her discoveries.
Her discoveries and then her releases.
Okay.
Both, this has been the three rebal.
Okay, so the reason, the reason I asked that, and I know it's pointed out, one of the commissioners has pointed it out, uh, we have discoveries in the amount of fifty thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, and total releases of six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars with one cent. So have a motion that we accept these as presented.
I might motion, say it, please.
Have a motion?
Right, we need.
Second.
We have a second. Any comment or questions? All approved, see if I go to hand, all opposed, light sign. All right, thank you very much. This time along with the agenda, we have to have approval of poll votes. Uh, we've had to do, uh, several poll votes on the, uh, necessitates that, we're having a lot of work there, you know, the facility there, the senior citizens is why we've been doing so many, so many of these, we generally don't like them, but we ask that we have a, a motion, as again, the ribbon cutting of the transit facility is not on here.
Uh, if, we just need to strike that poll as a motion, to strike that poll.
All right, that, that is separate motion. We have a motion that we strike the ribbon cutting at the transit facility. We have a motion.
Okay.
We have a second, any discussion, all approved, all opposed, thank you. All right, this time we have a motion that we go ahead and approve those poll votes on the installation of handrails instead of guardrails, installation of side mark with gutter instead of curb with gutter. These are both at the senior citizens facility, and also remove the occupancy tax legislation due to language change. Did you know we were unable to, uh, follow through on that legislation because it threw us a furball?
So much.
And, uh, we have to do that. We have a motion, have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? All approved, see if I go to hand, all opposed, light sign. All right, thank you very much. This time we recognize the county manager runs through the, uh, the issues, if there anything of discussion. Are you okay?
Very bad, actually.
Oh, good evening. It's been an eventful day. Sure. First off, I wanted to, uh, provide the board, uh, to be recording the minutes for a monthly status report for, uh, the CDB project twelve dash C dash two four one seven. And that one is, I'm getting to it right now. That is going to be the rehabilitation, uh, performance, performance schedule is on, uh, there's not a lot to report. Uh, again, as soon as Jones Stillwell and we get the, uh, the funds released for that project at Scotterside, we should be, should be getting more information of the day. On the monthly status report for the, uh, CDPG grant ten dash C dash two two three one, which is the Grand County Senior Center, uh, again, if you, if you, there we get up here, the, uh, up to Fort Hill, you can see, uh, senior centers coming around. It's looking really good. Uh, we have some items to, uh, bring to the attention of the board tonight, uh, but as far as the, uh, monthly performance status report, besides by the CDPG guidance, uh, it is, uh, it is provided. So, uh, do we need to take action on that?
Yes, we do.
You want to talk to this as we go along?
Yes.
Is there, try to.
Yes, sir.
Are we having a motion that we accept the monthly status report, CDPG twelve C twenty-four seventeen and ten C twenty-two thirty-one?
I move.
Have a motion?
Say.
Have a second, any discussion or comment? All approved? Thank you. All right, um, tax appeal for Vince Lance, present use value.
Yes, sir. If, uh, you remember the last, uh, court meeting we heard from, uh, I think it was the, uh, the son of Vince Lance, uh, who was requesting, uh, some consideration, said he did not get his information into, uh, the tax assessor in time. Uh, I have to hear it from Michael D. Brown in the Department of Revenue, uh, time applications can be made through December thirty-first, it can be approved by the, uh, Board of VNR, or County Commissioners, whichever is in session. Um, as you recall, the, uh, the student was provided with the opportunity to get that information to the tax assessor, and it, it just, it didn't happen.
So a motion, we like that, David.
We have a motion to, uh, to allow the appeal.
Say.
Have a second. Any discussion or comment? Everyone familiar with this case?
Yeah.
We came for, all right, not, uh, all approved, we're, we're, we're.
Okay. Next, uh, we've had a request from senior sys, uh, committee, uh, for a couple items here. Number one is the, uh, a request for a senior center, the handicap push button door, like we purchased, to be able to have the doors, you know, press a button, they'll open up automatically. And, uh, we have prices for that, uh, from the architect, that price came in at two thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, which is about five hundred dollars more than, uh, the doors that, the openers that we just put in at the half mark per each. So, uh, I think that having a senior center, the, the push button access door is a, is a very good idea, uh, but that price was higher than what we just got.
Didn't we just assault it out here?
We just, we, this one has been in for a while. Uh, that one was, uh, was repaired a while.
Repaired that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Cause, uh, that was a little bit less, it's twenty-seven hundred dollars. But the senior city, the center will have, if you could make that handicap, no one for sure.
I'm wondering if the matter two, the health department, they asked for two of those? Have they been asked on that?
Yes, sir. Uh, they have been ordered. We're just waiting on that one, so.
Okay.
I might motion that you check what the ones you ordered them from and order another.
Yes.
They installed? No, we didn't.
Okay.
I'll send that one.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion or comment? All approved.
I had to go ahead and get that across on general, is that the motion? All right, okay, here. Uh, next on the list is a, um, there was a request for a senior hot water, uh, a recirculating pump to be put into the senior center. Uh, this was not in the original plan. Uh, don't really see the necessity of having this in the building. It's a, uh, can be a very expensive process. That's going to keep the hot water into the lines, uh, most of the time. Uh, the plumber up there took it upon herself to go ahead and run the cotton piping for this. And it had not been approved by the board commissioners. Uh, my recommendation is to, that this is not a needed item for the senior center.
What would be the benefit of having?
You would, you would basically have instant hot water anywhere in the building whenever you turned on the faucet, instead of like at your house, you know, you may have to wait, what, ten or fifteen seconds?
It's like a disadvantage living in my house.
Yeah, and this, this item, uh, is looking at about one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to put this in.
That's a continuous.
A mile? One thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Well, it would be cheaper. It would be cheaper. What, what, what do you mean that for one?
She didn't ask.
I didn't ask for it. I don't know why.
No, no, you wanted it.
It would be cheaper to put in a, a spout, uh, hot water heater under the counter.
Yes.
If they want hot water in it.
Uh, well, I, I agree. But this is not an item that I, I see.
I might motion if we do have a problem.
Well, I mean, how do you do that? The contractor's already put it in the wall.
Well, it, it's, it's, it's something that he did upon himself. So it's his expense.
It was part of the bid, right?
No, it was not. They, they.
It was that.
They took it upon themselves to do it.
His expense.
What happened was the plumber kept concerned that they would not get water fast enough. So he, we went back and asked the architect to ask his engineer to see if that was going to be a problem down the road. And that was all we questioned. And the architect did get with his engineer. It got back to the plumber, and the plumber went ahead and put it in. They all agreed they went forward without.
No.
Approval. To do it. But they apparently asked concern that that's a possibility that could occur. They might have to wait fifteen, twenty, thirty seconds for water to get from one side of the building to the other. But that was not what we asked for. They just had concern with it.
I think they would leave behind for that. Or for this.
Motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor?
Denied.
Okay, since we're not on paper, I mean, that's not a change.
No, sir. It's nothing we asked.
So, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, any discussion or comment? All approved. Thank you. That was, uh, was that, that went on our.
The plumber himself was arrested.
That's in the updates, the, that came in after.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next on the list, as you recall, uh, in the, in the building that was approved, uh, by the commissioner, there was a senior center, uh, sign that was attached to the side of the building, uh, whenever you drove up. Uh, the committee is asking for a rock based sign that is similar to what you see, not exactly like the one, one, uh, the transit that size. But a sign that's closer out to the road, uh, that would be more decorative. Uh, this was sent out in a request, uh, the difference of putting a sign on the side of the building and putting a, uh, a sign out of the road that would be with dry stack rock around it is three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Can I add something to that? Where the sign is supposed to be on the building, you won't be able to see it from the road because of the drive through. It's obviously put in there, I mean, it was still. The sign, that's why we had.
They took that off the ground.
The sign was actually in the, uh, plans. This is for the base, for the, and the, and they, they had some leftover concrete, so that base floor is already laid. So this would just be for the rock base, for the thirty-seven. The sign, this actual sign was already budgeted for.
So that sign will work in this base?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it can make it work. You're basically asking for three thousand seven hundred dollars to build, do the rock work, to open the sign, you know, to, there.
Which is.
We're not building one out of three to six pieces. Recognize. In the time when we can afford it, but rock.
And, you know, that, that's something that's open, you know, obviously as a board, you know, if that's something that you would like to do, you know, to have discussion with, you know. You have anything you want to say to that one?
This is half the price.
You're talking about doing like a woodwork sign instead of the rock work right off the bat?
Just something that's type of price. Yeah.
The territory there.
Right.
What is?
This, this price is half the last sign that we have installed for sixty-two hundred.
Open the trade.
Uh, now, this is one of our grand county signs. We have paid sixty-two hundred dollars. And then the prior, well, that was like, uh, sixteen.
I saw, I saw, apparently, what we've done on our own signs and see, you know, damage. The one that got tore down up there, and they're five and six thousand dollars. And this one actually came back at, what, thirty-seven, fifty-eight hundred dollars, and they went back and cut it. They made it smaller. So it's actually down to thirty-seven hundred dollars now. From it, from the original fifty-eight hundred, I think.
Right.
Well, I'd like to make that motion. Go ahead with the thirty-seven hundred.
Well, I, my discussion would be this. We, we don't, I wouldn't want to see the nice sign that we have in the train that's a building succeeded by, uh, one that doesn't look similar or be in quality at least. That would be my thoughts. And I know it's, uh, taxpayer's dollar, however, we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar, um, project here, and we don't, I don't want to, um, lessen the look of the structure, um, by the sign. And, and I, I really don't think the citizens of the county would, or I'd say something, I believe what I just said.
Well, I have a motion on the floor. Let's get our process to get a second.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion, comment? All approved?
Did you get more of a bit of?
Yes, sir. Okay, I always do.
It's always going to be yes, man.
It always is.
I'm pretty asking you some trust in your case.
As a man of opinion. Uh, I don't always get responses, but I always request at least three. Um, next, uh, question that's only for the senior center is, uh, the dirt is still in behind the senior center. Some of that dirt is, is not useful for building. It's, uh, you know, it's got just different materials in it that are not going to be, be suitable for, to, uh, the future development on top. Uh, we have a couple different options. We've taken some of the dirt out to, uh, to behind Stanley to be used there, to spread out, uh, whenever we see the, uh, red part come along. Uh, there's been some other discussion about taking some of that dirt that'll end up on the EMS bus. Uh, the dirt is up there, and, uh, if you have an opinion as to what you'd like to do with it, certainly let me know. That way, I'll make sure that that gets in the places you, you have in mind for it together.
Okay, okay. We, we had some discussion about this during the workshop, uh, okay, and I think that the, the board is looking at having that hole filled up there in EMS.
Okay.
And we came to understand, uh, from Mr. Embry, that there are actually plants in place with two, uh, building pads already in place, already been done. Everything is set on, and you said, McKeel, was holding, and it's like a sixteen thousand dollar, six thousand dollar investment at the time, about pulling the trigger on it and getting it done. And one of the things we were discussing is using the dirt that's over right now, and just go ahead and start putting it in the hole down there. And then the possibility of having that volumes, the volumes figured on that, and go ahead and have that cut out and proceed with the two building sites.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, and it has a history behind it, and apparently somewhere down the way, there's, you know, it's all planned out that somebody.
That dirt's not going to be suitable to build on top of.
But you can fill it. We were putting down the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, as long, as long as you don't plan on putting any sort of structure on it.
All, all of it, really?
I mean, right there, that dirt up there near the edge, it's got some milk, you know, just like little shell debris and stuff like that in it. You're not going to get the bags from there. But now, if you're just building a hole with it, just, you know, for, to get them to match.
Can you not build those with that dirt?
Now, now, the dirt, there was some dirt up there that was really good clay dirt. Yeah, that's fine. You can pack it. But now, some of that dirt where they dug in there and then they hit it all in or something like that, where they couldn't even build in the senior center?
Yeah, I know. They had to go there and take a lot of garbage.
And they had to take a lot of garbage out. And so, you have some of that substance there on site. You know, I wouldn't put it on site if you made a decision to build it, huh? But now, it's not all like that. I'm just saying, you've got a mixture.
I think that pretty much what it is, is what we can, what we can use, we can use now. And if we can, look at it from the standpoint of, point of cutting that bank all around.
When I'm saying the material, oh, you're going to fail it. Put it in the. Looking to the outside. Outside slope comes up, it's out from under you, hey, it's in. It's in the throat, I don't know why you're worried about it.
So you can still put it up on the slope, off of, off there.
You have to bring it up on the slope.
Yeah, you, you just want to make sure that the unsuitable soils are put in a location where, you know, you don't have to worry about having to dig into them.
Tell you, you can play the alley you build.
Okay, so, so it can be, uh, well, this board needs to have the conversation about it, because I, I personally think that for six thousand dollars, if, that's just, that was what, how many years ago?
That's in May of two thousand seven. Uh, in the discussion room, I was asked to check on the deal on Peachtree. They said, no, six thousand, they, uh, that the county never decided to play it.
Huh?
They never decided to play that one.
All right. Well, do we think it might be better than, would you investigate and find out about that?
I would certainly be willing to look in to see what, you know, what, what plan they actually had, uh, and see what, what the potential is there. Um, so, I, I don't want to go in and spend six thousand dollars on something I, I really.
I tell you what.
Know anything about it.
Yeah.
So hopefully, if we're talking about building, probably not a big, I think there's a lot of ground to cover back.
Did you say build it that night?
No, when you start fitting that complete whole up, you're looking at, see.
Oh, yeah. I'd say, I'd say if it works. If I'm not making a motion, we did work, really type of saying, and David, uh, who feel that end so far back with that dirt. And it was, it's three or four more of the sites up our field.
It's not really a far part of it.
Yeah, it, it's not a common thing.
And that, that little short hole in the cow's blood, or how it's somewhere else, it's in the cow's horse, I'd say. I might post that we use it up there under Vegas.
Well, also Larry, it's a couple pieces of gray by, you know.
Yeah.
I love the old ones.
Under Vegas directions and going by the bed.
I mean, yeah, okay. I mean, that, that's fine. I'll, I'll be happy to, uh, see what we can do. I'm not sure what the total expense of that's going to be, I mean, as far as buying five and getting all that stuff in.
Hey, I understand you say that there was money expended, money paid to architects and such.
Yeah, typically, you go through like the bases.
Right.
You pay them so much upfront and so much government process.
Okay.
And, uh, they got to a point where it might have been through the deal. So, I mean, we've got full draws. I, I think I think Greg, everybody's got, of the lots that ran this piping. It was off the dinner permits, it was off the studies.
And those aren't great, right?
Right, it was just down to the fine thing where it's in.
If you could let us know how much the county has paid out.
Out.
On that project.
Would you?
We will, I would like to know that. I worked on that when the UCF commissioner came in, they did that, they ran the fact that it's called, it's two thousand and seven. In two thousand and six, I did, I worked on that. They came to a certain portion of that that's left, and they refused to pay Jeff Bishop and the deal discussions, the remainder of the fees due. So they went and grabbed the study. And I think now, they didn't just shut it. Hold off. I don't know what's going to happen with it. Yes, that, that did happen, exactly what David's saying is true. So some of the money is worth paying out. Oh, yes, there were. The taxpayers have paid funds. Yes, it was when they renovated the EMS facility, they want to have you have a study on the rest of that property, on that one side of the road there to use for the future. I thought it was completed when I tried to get the transit still, it's where I tried to go down in front of the EMS and leave the bigger portion of that and found out that the study had not been paid for or completed due to a lot of funds not paid on.
And the, the six thousand dollar investment that we're talking about is what's left?
It's sticking in my mind, like.
Yeah, okay, but we don't know what is.
Twenty-eight hundred.
How much?
I think it's forty-eight hundred dollars.
I don't know.
I have my mind back then, I think. If you don't find that out, would you just get that information and let us know? And also let us know how much was paid on the project, and whether or not we have plans to use it now. It would still make sense to me to complete a project if a lot of funds have been sunk in it already, rather than just making that useless to, to complete a project. I think it's not a huge matter.
All right, is this going to help?
Thank you, lady, just like you said, before we do the land.
But if you go with that more sequence, you will, up there on that four year. If you go and take.
That's, that's, that is just part of what happened on that one, they don't have. Yeah, the study entailed going across the street and building two lots and taking the dirt or three lots and bringing it over to that. Is that not correct, one of them? They were going to actually go on the Fort Hill side and take that dirt down and sprint across the road.
Yes.
To the hillside.
Yes.
And end up with four or five.
That was something for upper flow market, the commissioners' block was also.
Yes, yes.
I would like.
As part of.
But it's a good, but in, ah, oh, yeah, yeah, now it's, it's, it's still like in, in thousand.
Look, I'm not, I'm not even talking about building or anything.
This time I get the paper.
But find out how much it would cost to finish whatever that project was, and how much money has been sunk in to this point. Now, looking forward, we don't know what has to be built there. And, you know, whether or not we ever in our lifetime do anything with it, possibly some of our kids are brave, and it's likely to.
Well, one of the sites is stacked outside below the EMS. And then the next one is stacked outside, down toward the main power.
Okay.
And it's, it's actually stacked outside.
So it's tears down. Well, is it going to help the immediate problem that, that Larry brought to us in the workshop?
It's going to help his.
Yeah.
Will immediately, because he has a pole and he has the pipe, the site, and the dirt's there. Those, these other sites.
All right, that's your view. Look at it, huge.
All right, uh, Commissioner Williams has a, a motion on the floor, uh, to go and pursue this, is that right, Brandon? To have, uh.
About what? They talked about in the work session.
About having that done. And, you know, it comes to it, we don't have to do this tomorrow. I mean, if it's.
No.
But we have to go and designate that anything else in the building comes out, goes in the hole. And I don't know who else can make that decision, but, you know, that's what we have to designate, is that that's what the process would be, is to get it down. And, uh, and it's the material and everything. I mean, that's going to be a call on the guys as you go along with it and decide about where that bulk material will be on the slope and not on the path.
Right.
Um, I understand. I didn't thought of that, as Bill said, so. All right, we have a motion to do this. We have a second. We have a second. Any further discussion or comment? Okay, all approved? All right, thank you very much.
We, we.
Confused by it. Not, not our condition, but, um, please do.
Could you guys put us information on that project and what's left?
I'll find out everything I can, ma'am.
Because they go by the pros and cons.
I'm frozen dead.
Okay, uh.
Okay, let's move on, please. Okay, let's move along, please.
Next is the, uh, you see the photo with, uh, Juanita coming down the steps? There is a request with the new sidewalk, it looks really nice, uh, to have a set of steps that would be able to come down from that upper parking lot to the senior center with, uh, with a handrail. Uh, it would intersect down there at the bottom and, uh, would interconnect, you know, the two, the upper side and the lower side, build a walkway. We got bids, three bids on the concrete steps, uh, or three proposed, I'm sorry, right, I said bids, if we've got, saw out three different prices with three different contractors. The lowest bid came in at three thousand three hundred dollars to build those steps. Uh, and being from the building industry, I can say, you know, whenever you build concrete steps, you can have a substantial amount in material. Because a lot of times you never know how much actual concrete you're gonna have to use, uh, for something like that. Lowest bid was three thousand three hundred dollars, and we got one bid back for those handrails, and it was for one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents.
That's from where Ed, and he got the top, he was already awarded the top contract for the top layer. Right here. Now, we check for everybody.
Okay, if he admits it is not a bid?
It's a, I don't know.
It was a proposal. He gives, he's reading that, I think, it's three thousand, thousand dollars. Yes, sir. I would agree. Uh, it is a request on behalf of the senior city committee, the board, the board commissioners, and that's why I'm here.
But I mean, I don't have the problem with it, but, but, I mean, you're not here.
Um-
Nine thousand dollars.
I understand, I mean, tonight, we, we, you're, you're exactly right. From a management standpoint, looking at both issues, this is what I deal with on a budget basis. And whenever we look at these projects, a lot of things that, uh, we've developed this project around, and many other things, uh, you know, tonight, we're looking at a fingerprint machine, it's eighteen thousand. We've got, uh, another aspect that's gonna be about twenty-two hundred, uh, there's quite a bit of money going out here.
And a new sign.
And, and the sign as well, uh, with thirty-seven.
And I'm looking at appraisal, man, it's up there.
Uh, a survey. There's, there's, there was not a survey down on the senior site, that's something that we're gonna have to, uh, that has to be surveyed flat up into itself. Doesn't mean that any of these items can't be addressed in the future, but because, you know, the state, if you hit the sidewalk, it's in place, it's ready to have a set of steps connected to it at some point. But being the bag out from the budget side of things, whenever I look at the monies that are going out, at some point, we have to take a step back.
Once we get the, the appraisal, I probably, we just-
Well, there's another issue here too, or it may not be an issue, but do you want these steps built before they're paved? Or not, we're gonna be in there, Mr. Hyatt, and, and, you know, that route.
How much can we save on the kitchen?
Thirty thousand.
We spent that already. Yes, we're working on that.
It's a little bit of a blow.
Save thirty thousand dollars on the kitchen.
I think it was twenty-eight cents.
If I can say one thing about the, the sidewalks, the, one of the reasons about the sidewalks is, is that you double your capacity for parking. The senior center has limited parking, none of them fix the top parking lot and pick up at least twenty more parking spots. For, for parking, that's it, that's the, that's the reason it stays.
That, it's a connector.
It's a connector that allows overflow parking or additional parking to the top.
Well, most, most seniors come in and live, so.
Right, so.
How many more? We have about seventy-five percent of the road there. We have fifteen, at least fifteen to eighteen of the road today.
And you keep your seniors that walking down that road instead of going down the street, stand on the road, it's one way to we look at it and worry about it.
Yeah, actually, can it be done in the future?
Yep.
Well, it's not the oldest duck and the pepper is up there. Let me tell you something. The older you get, the less steps you need to go up there. And if you, I can walk in paved area and in flat area. I might want to go there. If I'm up in the parking lot, I'd much, much better go fifteen, twenty extra steps and go in on the flat driveway and not fall, just to go down the park step in my knee.
And, and one of the things too, and I think all of us realize this, you know, the iron, the pot right now, about having people mobilize on site, like you say, the handrail guy. I mean, that's what I'm hearing, he's already there and done the, you know, the handrails and stuff. But then I hear two abilities saying, and I understand that. And then I understand too about the limited parking access, and the whole idea was parking, and, uh-
Well, and that's, that's the whole, this came about as a step involved. So as you get further along, you can actually sit where if you have a set of steps, you may have fifty parking spots down here, but you pick up twenty more up here, so.
Does that mean that's the bottom, fifteen?
I hope we get fifteen. And I've seen more cars than that at our close, so, I mean, you know, that's, I just think in the future, that they will be parking up there. And walk about through the road, because there'll be a lot of parking, and then eventually they'll come back. We're saying, so, I mean, that's just-
What about the pad that's over there across from the entrance and curb that's still, you know what I'm talking about, that's going to the church, that's still over there? And, uh-
Always go to the end.
You're about to dirt.
It's a building.
Get the dirt.
The side of the dirt.
You know where it's at, right?
The side where we have dirt laying on the right side, to come out.
Yeah, it's right there across the street.
Yeah.
It's a building pad.
I'm actually a parking place, it'd be, it's a real problem, that's going across the curb.
You won't cross the curb.
We already did that, so, yeah. I mean, the thing, honestly, the whole thing is just about parking, so, I got the kind of parking on the top, so.
Right. Drop on the E M S, up here.
Yeah, where we fill it in.
Okay. That's tight, this, this thing's for, I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay. I, I, I want to go up there and get yourself, I mean, you know, as to the time. I'm older than that, partner.
Are you sixty?
I'm sixty-one.
You're old enough.
I love it. Okay, we'll go, move along, we're gonna go ahead and table this, this part, but it's on the, uh, it's on the, uh, steps. Ready.
Uh, the other thing that was asked to bring to your attention is, uh, in that same location where the steps are being disassembled, I think you have some of that information. Uh, there's, there's gonna be a need to manage some of the water that's coming off of that parking lot. Uh, we have a couple of different options right there in that curb. It's just an area where large amounts of water is gonna be competing right there, coming around that sidewalk. Uh, there's a couple of different options, uh, as presented by the contractor. Number one is to put a, a drain, a headwall drain in that would catch the water that's coming down inside the, the sidewalk. And then be piped into the main headwall that was put in where you cross the, uh, the right way. Um, that aspect, that fix is a little bit more expensive, uh, than the other option, which is to create a ditch right there and then just fill that with riprap. And then all that water would be channeled coming off the road and coming from the upper, the upper plant parking lot. And then it would be going to that ditch and then be channeled into the headwall that's already placed. If we do the riprap option, it would be about nine hundred dollars, uh, that's something that, uh, we can prove if you do the headwall, pipe that into the other, uh, headwall existing driveway, it'll be two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This is something that we're gonna have to address because of the way the property lays, there are waters.
This is a five property, this is a, this is not space. It's the water, but the reason we had to do the wall, or we would have done the curb together, was because we got so much water coming out through there that it can't go off on the senior bank. It had to make that turn and go down into the headwall. So now it's created, and we either got a riprap or, we gotta do something to slow it down and get it down into that drainage of the headwall we have. Any water that's there, it's coming down. I'd say it would be riprap.
Did we have any other kind of motion?
They did.
We did, we did.
So you want to make a motion to do the riprap and not make a motion to do the riprap?
Okay, let me ask one question on this. Did we get his motion taken care of? Mr. Williams?
Yes, he did not make a motion on the second, he made a motion on the, uh, the dirt in the E M S base, step and rail, we did not have a motion.
Okay, that's right. Make sure we, we're sorry, just want to make sure we got it covered. All right, we have, he made a motion just now to go ahead with the riprap option on the drainage, you have a second?
I don't know, I, I, I know the difference in the cost, nine hundred as opposed to twenty-two hundred, which would be, you got to know, y'all have to tell me that.
I'm gonna make the suggestion.
Go ahead, Dave.
That if we're gonna, if you're gonna do that, like, put the, the table, the wall, or connect it, so maybe you got all the stairs back and you're looking at it. And something we have to do for a project.
That's right, we have, I mean, that's when?
Uh, well, I mean, it's a couple months, it's done, but we're gonna get started with this.
And that's a twenty-two hundred.
All the other drainage stuff, we can get out, but you, actually, he has to figure it out before they-
Is this nails?
Dave, how's, uh, Larry, is this part getting taxes, getting flooded down here?
Walked out, stay in. And I'm trying to slow it down, that's what I did.
What'd you say, Larry?
From the church, put twenty bathrooms this year, and it's literally like that, and, and, and I was pissed at this whole overflow happen.
It goes into the veins, right?
Well, and that's, yeah, we're cleaning up the water.
Now, remember, a lot of that, that top side with that dirt before, and we've got that plane with it now, so, and as that's planes and as the grass is there, that will get, the mud's gonna slow it down right now.
All right, I, I was saying our motion, and we're, 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 we're now making our own. All right, Commissioner Williams is my, so, we've drawn his motion, and, uh, wants to table this discussion until it-
And look at it all quick, this, this thing.
Yeah, I'll look at it as a picture, a whole picture. All right. Every step, okay, all right.
All right. Okay, uh, we continue on with this, and we'll have that, uh, the next one that I see here, the, is, uh, a, a survey?
Survey. Yes, sir, uh, the survey, uh, for the senior center is something that's gonna have to be done, it's gonna have to be surveyed, filed, everything.
Then, then is, when does that have to be done?
Before, uh, before the grant is closed down.
Okay.
Before what?
Before, before the grant is completely closed down.
I think that's in November.
How much is that going to cost?
And this was, it was never done. I think a lot of folks thought that the, uh, administrator had this down, but it was not, uh-
How much is that gonna cost?
Uh, with permission from the board, I'll contact our two local surveyors and get prices. It's something we're gonna have to do.
What do you figure?
I don't know what it's gonna cost.
Thank you. How much, do you have much to pay for?
Yes, but I can have to post it later.
Oh, then I have to post it, just.
They have no, they're topos, Miss Landmark.
The paperwork actually is already done by prior, uh, surveyor and transit, and if, if you choose to go with him, he's got all that. And really, the lines are pretty much determined, other than that one line, I mean, it's the road, the road, the road, curb line and the parking lot, and it's really that big long line with the dirt pile. Comes down, and how far I can extend and how far I can, do, the grant itself, she doesn't want to go more than an acre, point one. So I think we're at three quarters right now, so, it's really how much we got to want to give. Another one of those things, let's see, that's all I can pull out. Now, what, they will be able to say, we're here at a loss.
We'll get us a price.
Yeah, that, that would be the easiest thing, because, I mean, the only other survey we've done recently was on the sanitation site, and that was about ten and a half acres, and I think it was around three thousand, so I don't have anything really to compare it to. It would give you a good price. Uh, but it's something that's, that's gonna have to be done, and, uh, but I just-
I think people, which one was done, just, just, she was doing it, she didn't know about the price.
Probably so.
Alan Carter.
Yeah, so I'm gonna reach out to Alan Carter and, and Terry Tanner, that way, and they have the opportunity.
Okay, all right, that's standing, stay, let's move along, please.
Okay, um, wanted to let you know, uh, I did receive, uh, an appointment from the governor for the T B A Regional Resource Council. Uh, that first meeting will be from October ninth to tenth, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, serving in that capacity and, uh, to, uh, see what we can do if you're, you're the rail in regards to T B A. Uh, I thought Tony Almedy today, he's the senior advisor to the governor, uh, he was appointed to the energy council, T B X, the former coordinator, together, team up and make sure, uh, we get all the information we can coming out. Uh, stray animals update, uh, as, uh, as you asked, I reached out to, uh, different humane societies, uh, animal shelters, other counties in the area, to see how they're handling the stray animal problem. Uh, I reached out specifically to Valley River Humane Society, uh, after reading, uh, the article, some of the other articles, others that have been put in the paper. Uh, I have asked three times to Valley River Humane Society to provide me with a contract that they have with Grand County. Uh, and I've never been provided with that. I've been unable to locate it in Grand County's offices. Uh, they have located a draft of a contract, and they said, is what it was, but it didn't have any signatures or anything like that. Uh, we are more than willing to look into and try to work with, with anyone to handle this stray animal problem, but I need, as I told them, I needed some documentation to show where the county is actually obligated. Uh, and, uh-
I'm ready.
For, well, that's, that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Uh, I promised the bird that the payment, the reason that they didn't get paid was because they didn't do nothing. And that's it.
Yes, sir.
They wouldn't tell, and they didn't, and they didn't get their funds, if I'm mistaken.
Yes, sir, and I, I-
You're right.
Or to the director and said something different, I just report the news, right? They said that they came here after, for six months after.
And then with that?
I think it's, it's their word against his, and our, it's a reflect their word.
Well, you said you couldn't have a contract.
You said they had a draft that is not-
They, 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 I was told that they, they had a draft.
But without signature or anything.
There's no signature.
Well, there's, there's one point that I'd like to make in this, and, you know, we make every effort to find out what the county does, and we also don't have any audacity to say. And we will not have outstanding debt from one fiscal year to the next.
Yes, sir.
So that's the point. The next point is that I can remember when this board, the board came on, uh, two and a half years ago, that I was there, and the only thing that I heard from that organization was a request for special appropriations in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars, and we made a decision not to, to do it.
Because they hadn't, uh-
That, that was just it. There was not a contractual requirement in that, it was asked under special appropriations for fourteen thousand dollars. And it was a decision of that standing point at the time, if I remember correctly, is that we decided not to make a special appropriation.
Exactly.
So, in that, I want to make sure that I have my ducks in a row on that. If we owe somebody money, this county, the taxpayers of this county owe somebody a debt, we're gonna pay it, but until then, we're not going to.
I completely agree, and-
I mean, we can't.
Well, and, and I've explained that over and over again to, uh, the different individuals, is that, you know, with, without a contract, without the obligation that I need to write a check to taxpayer funds, I can't cut that check. And to this point, no one's made me provide me with that information. And to this point, no one's been able to provide me with that information to prove that contract.